Okay.
All set.
Bitty to order then? Start with the pledge.
The Fire Department of the United States, and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite, and just as for all.
The first order of business is to open a public hearing relative to, says liquor license and special amusement. Do we need one for a liquor license and our renewal?
Um, I don't really think so. It says you may.
Yeah, okay.
Hold it. So, but the clerk had posted it, so I figured I'd put it on just in case anybody has any questions.
Yeah, well, that will open the public hearing relative to the application for a liquor license, renewal liquor license and special amusement permit by Bentley Saloon. Anyone here want to address any issues, questions, comments? Public hearings take time, don't they? I'll close the public hearing then move on. Move of the agenda. It looks like we have at least one adjustment here and an application for use of the going field by the Kennybunk, Arundel and Kennybunkport Little League.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have a couple other things that I'd like to add. I would like to have a discussion on free range chickens. And I want to give you a status update on some information that the fire chief shared with me today relative to a new ambulance and cost and associated with that.
Okay.
And I'd like to add under other business, or it doesn't matter where actually, I'd just like to have a quick discussion about this meeting room.
Okay. Anything else, folks? Yeah, just add that all under business or other business. So we'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda then. All in favor? Forum, when you have a question, comment, or bring something to the attention of the board that we're not slated to discuss already. Oh, moving on. And the approval is April twenty fifth.
I looked them over the other day, so I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve this submitted. Find anything?
I'll second that.
Favor then? I have. Did we get an answer to the question regarding handouts in the voting booths regarding the charter amendments?
We haven't yet, Mr. Chairman.
No committee and board reports? The manager apparently is going to be out of the area, May twelfth to the eighteenth.
Uh, yes, I'm traveling to South Carolina again to, uh, to help my daughter do some, some things, so I'll be gone. Um, if I'm needed, obviously I've got my phone, I've, and can be contacted in the event that something does come up.
When was that, uh, meeting with DOT?
It's going to be on the twelfth.
It is on the twelfth.
It's on the twelfth, yes. I, uh, Terry is going to represent, uh, Public Works Rogers out as well as I am. Um, and I talked to the fire chief today, today, and he also will be there. So we'll have a representation there, um, in the event that something comes up that we need to address. And I'm sure that, uh, I'll communicate with Terry if he needs to. I'll have my phone on my travels, so he can give me a call as well.
All right. Okay. Uh, I don't know if I can get there. I think I have mediation, but we'll see. Moving on to business, automatic foreclosure on properties, first item.
Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give you an update. I believe I shared with you a municipal quitclaim deed for, for nine hundred Limerick Road, um, uh, provided it to, um, attorney clerks who was representing, uh, the grandson, and I wanted to give it to you folks. And I highlighted the section in red that he had recommended that we put in, and unless I hear any strong objections, I will move through the process of, of, um, getting the funding, uh, provided to us. Uh, and then having this, uh, this quitclaim key recorded and moving forward. Okay. The, the other piece of that is that we had that, uh, we had that property on, uh, I think it's Dear Run Circle off of Talbot, in Talbot Woods. The, uh, the estate contacted me last week, um, apologized, and we're working, trying to work with them to, to ensure that they, they get the property back in their name. So, uh, we sent them some payoff, um, information. I spoke to the lady on the phone. Uh, hopefully we'll be able to work out something where they can get their property back as well. So those were two of the largest pieces that are pretty outstanding with property, with houses on them that were, I was concerned about.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, I guess the bearer of bad news is here. Um, Mr. Tashero, deal with the per ton paving cost for 2022.
I somehow ended up with a figure cold, so I don't have COVID, I tested negative, but where am I asking it? I don't know how many options we truly have on this. I'm told by the paving contractor that they have several contracts out right now above the rate they've quoted us. And in town close to us, they've already negotiated a deal for ninety-two dollars a ton. So prices are nuts. They basically gave us this price figuring we were going to do the usual five thousand tons. Our options could be, don't do any paving this year, put the money in the bank, but I think we're taking a crap shoot as to what might happen next year if we did that. There's other options. I mean, we don't, obviously we're not going to do all this work. So if we went with their, their prices, overall, we're looking at twenty-one thousand, five hundred seventy-six dollar increase over our budgeted numbers. That's to be kind of a deal breaker, and all we do is start slashing projects off the bottom. Other than that, I mean, you could, a couple of these projects really can't wait another year. But there's a few that could. I mean, it is truly up to you folks what you want to do. I wouldn't recommend that we play poker with what the prices are going to be because the liquid asphalt price is dealt with as a commodity now. I've got prices back from two thousand and twelve, and they've only gone up. And they're up over the liquid prices he quoted us on the budget. Right now it was seven hundred and two dollars a liquid ton. So I'm afraid for the immediate future, these prices are only going to go up. And even at eighty-four dollars a ton, there is an escalator clause in the contract. It all depends on what the liquid price is that day.
Any comments, folks? Questions?
I don't think we should wait and see what happens.
Some, but some towns are doing that.
Worst case.
Exactly.
Personally, I don't see any of these prices coming back down. I guess stuff is at some point in time going to stay where it is. It's never. And failure in the business, so I mean, construction costs and all that stuff that you deal with, it's not coming down. Since you're going down the control, if it comes down, it will be a little bit. It's not going to go back to where it was.
One of the problems they have based on their increase in cost is that all the hired trucks that haul hot top for them put in for an increase of ten dollars an hour. This is a hired truck that hauls hot top. Ten dollars an hour, it's all based on fuel. So that's part of the increase. The other part is the liquid pot, which is sold as a commodity on the stock exchange. You can look it up on any given day, and they'll tell you what the price is. Asphalt weekly monitoring.
Is it possible, like for next year, is it possible to get this information a little sooner so that if the price change, kind of see if we can fit into the budget? Because at this point now, if we were to try to do everything, it's kind of late to increase our budget for the stock, right?
Well, a couple, a couple of things that you have, and I, I obviously, I think you should take your, uh, lead from Roger in assessing what roads really need to be addressed, but you know, you've got half a million dollars in paving. So, um, and plus we, we're going to set aside another hundred thousand dollars for additional paving that we missed before. So, and it, and I spoke to Roger about that, that, that additional hundred thousand won't cover everything we wanted it to cover, uh, initially. So, um, I think that we use that funding and use it in the worst cases that, that he discovers that we really need to look at, and we continue to move on. Um, and then to your point, I mean, based on the information we have, I don't think you'll have the new um, tonnage coverages or tonnage for, for next year prior to resetting that budget again, but we'll also have what we've got now. So we'll know that, you know, and then, and like he said, we can go on at any time to check the commodity, what the liquid asphalt prices are. That'll give us a good idea of where we may be.
You can know ahead of time what the actual tonnage is now for the projects that are laid out, but the price per ton?
Right.
You know, I just, you know, I think it's too bad because I don't know if we have been able to fit it in pretty much, but at least we had a better understanding of trying to play with some numbers and fit everything in and what you're pushing for.
Yeah.
And at this point now, it's kind of really too late to do that.
It, it, it's really about how much money you want to spend. I know if you gave him a million dollars, he'd spend a million.
Doesn't work that way.
Never has.
But I think you did a great job this year. You, you held the budget. I mean, if you recall back, I think my recommendation was to reduce it slightly, and you guys chose to, to hold the line, which I think was good, uh, good vision. Um, so we've got a hundred, we've got five hundred and seven thousand plus another hundred thousand due, and we'll get done what we can get done.
Go ahead, Henry.
Roger, that's his priority, you know, so the road crew. That he wants to really get done and get done one each half for four years.
That's what we've been doing for thirty years.
Yeah, you don't have to sit back and wait.
Yeah. I mean, the other option is to go to bids, and I think that price would go away fast. And if you go to bid, somebody's going to come in, lowball the bid, promise you the moon and the stars, and then not deliver anything.
We have a good longstanding relationship with these guys.
Yeah.
I definitely would like to see this stick with these guys, which is Dayton, San Diego for the record. If you go to bid, you don't know what you're going to get. But I'm told the Sockland Scarborough signed contracts higher than this.
Okay, do you need anything else from us, Roger? I think the consensus is do what you can with what you got and address this most needy circumstance, whatever, whatever they are.
Very good.
And you have another piece of bad news, I understand.
Uh.
On the truck, truck frame?
Well, that was something that we, we've known about for quite a while. I thought you were talking about something else, which is the help situation. Two thirds of the road crew is here tonight, by the way.
What's that?
Two thirds of the road crew is here tonight.
Really?
Yeah, we're back at, uh, advertising for, for employees. We had two that left us.
Three.
Oh, that's right. Sorry. Yep, we had.
Yeah. There's no more loyalty, folks. If you want loyalty, get yourself a dog.
Wow.
Anyway, on the truck. We think we could save a little bit of money. This price that Coastal gave us, I talked to him last week. Even though steel prices are crazy, he kind of anticipated that. They're looking at sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred seventy-four was their original estimate. He said it's still in the ballpark. It really depends on what you find on this truck when they take it apart. We already know that we're looking at an increase of about sixteen hundred bucks. One pot on the steering box is leaking again. When they do these frame sections, that steering box comes off anyway. It only makes sense to replace it. They said that we could supply the pots from that to them, and they will do it. No great extra charge for, because it's off already. We got to buy the pots, that's all. And there's a nine hundred dollar court charge for those steering boxes. It only makes sense to do that. My question for you folks is, with some money in the capital equipment sweeps account, there's a balance of twenty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety dollars in that. To do this estimate, they want the cost of the frame rails as soon as the truck gets there they want to deposit on, basically twenty-five thousand dollars. Do we wait until after the budget is final at town meeting? I mean, it, it's not the end of the world. That this thing doesn't go to Hampton, uh, Portsmouth, actually, until a day after town meeting. We've got to strip some pieces off in it. We've got to take the dump body off, the plow frame, the wing box. We can do that in-house. It would be, I would think we'd be better off if we could send it sooner than that, but that is a decision you folks have to make. Depending on what you think the budget's going to do and how things are going to go. My only reason for wanting to send it sooner is the fact that this thing has got a plow style. It goes in line when it gets there and not with a wink and a nod, and maybe next week we'll have it there. When it gets there, it goes in line. They're looking at basically probably two and a half to three months from the time it gets there until the time it gets done. Then it's going to come back and be put back together because it's got a plow style. But again, this truck has forty, doesn't, doesn't have forty thousand. Forty-six thousand miles on it. It's got another ten years in it if we do this. If we don't, it's going to end up on some back lot someplace.
I, I think the risk is, oh, I actually send it up now.
Again, it, it's not the end of the world, but I'd like to see that thing go there as soon as possible. So there is money in the capital equipment sweep account to cover that for the down payment of it. They will not touch it until they have ordered the pots and frame rails right now at twenty-five grand.
If it's not the end of the world, I would say June thirteenth. You never know.
No, you don't. That's, that's why I brought it forward.
I totally, I'm with you, but why risk it?
So you're saying don't, don't send it till after you get approval, Jason?
Yeah.
Well, basically, you're talking about a month's time.
The voters turn down.
Never.
That's why I said it's more risk, but still.
Particularly since it's not our money.
I don't see a lot of risk, that's why.
I mean, which comes from, you know, yeah, it's not our money, but you know, walk from one, you know, if it was out, we would have to take from, from the other budgets, right? So it's not like there's no money there. It's just something that's going to be short somewhere.
Right, no, but these, these funds are coming from the
Federal government.
The government, the rest of the funds.
We have, we have the ARPA funds now.
Right.
They're in our account, but we don't have approval to spend them yet. So our hope is obviously that the, that the taxpayer will give us the approval to spend federal money that we have in our, in our hands, so.
I agree with you. Yeah, I just, I don't know. I think it's a responsible thing to wait till the public tells us, okay.
Well, there's a couple ways you could look at it. I, I, Jason, if it was all tax dollar money that, um, that we're looking at, I, I totally agree with you, but that, I, I guess if I strategize this, I would say that, um, say, let's look at worst case. Say they vote us down seventy thousand dollars from federal money to, to do the rails. Our next, our next, um, strategy would be to have a special town meeting as that is a special, specific article to discuss. If, if we send it down, say we spend the twenty-five, send it down, it gets in line, we get rejected, we'd have to come back with a special to explain to them purposely what that, if they voted it down, what the reason, uh, what we need it for. I'm pretty confident that, uh, most people will look at that and say that, uh, you know, that's a, that's money well spent. So that would be my strategy if we get voted down, so. But it's your call. You tell us what you want to do.
You know, somehow we may get the, uh, voters know before they vote. It would cost upwards of two hundred and fifty thousand to replace that truck. And that's a max. That truck is good for at least, well, we get three of them with six hundred thousand on them. And we don't do nothing with regular maintenance. Uh, that truck is way worth fixing. That will last another ten years if we don't get it solved.
Any further discussion, folks? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
I totally agree the truck should get repaired. I just think we should wait till the money's there.
Thank you, Roger.
Okay, next item concerns the mass gathering permit for the Arundel Conservation Trust. Henry, how we doing? Good. Some concerns, uh, some of those because at least expressed in terms of the volume of people that be here using the facilities and whether we ought to insist upon or talk about having a porta potty or something and supplement that if, uh, so that's, that's the reason we've asked you to come in and discuss that, whether so, what's your concerns or maybe allay our concerns about that, but.
I just think they, uh, you know, granted, with their, their, we go from there, we're available for people that I, it tends to me anyways, wasn't that we were going to have hundreds and whatever, a lot of people using all of it, and well, it might be the septic system, but we can handle that. I don't think that's the technical requirement, you know?
We must have the, uh, septic system design on file somewhat?
Oh, he, he, yes, yeah, yeah, we're, uh, in terms of, um, capacity for the septic system, we're, we're all set there. I think the issue that we have would be the, the, the size of our public facilities. We've only got, um, two, two toilets in the ladies' room, one toilet and a urinal in the men's room. So there's only, only four that could be utilized at any given time. So if he's got eighty or so people here, it may be wise to, to at least have one porta potty. I know runners generally, they, they'll go in and they'll come right back out and they're ready to go. So they don't want to, they don't want to spend a lot of time inside a facility, but if you have children and families that have come by, it may be appropriate. Um, and again, it, it happened last year as well, and I don't recall us having any issues with the, with the bathrooms last year, nor did, did we have any cleanliness problems with them when I came in the following, after the function, so.
So with that, do you want one or two? What, what's the consensus here?
I would say two.
Okay. You also wave with the bond, don't we? Let it run, okay.
Yes, I believe we do. Yeah, I'll double check it to make sure that it's all set, but yeah, I think you're right, Henry.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second to that? Further discussion? Favor then?
I have, I have it here. I'll send it on down. You can sign it.
Thanks, Henry Carter. Next item then is the liquor license for Bentley Saloon and the special amusement permit.
I think most would approve it.
I'll second that.
Both of them?
Yes, yes.
Was main seconded for the discussion with respect to those applications and permits.
Pretty much the same as what we've done every year.
I'm gonna favor that. Granted.
You're in the pink. Send them on down.
Yeah, okay.
First one.
Okay, next item is the, have we approved?
You, you've gone through the financial pieces and, and okayed. But you have not signed the warrant yet, so I have the, I have the warrant completed. I double checked all the numbers today, they're all accurate. So I'm just, would look like to get, the town clerk would like to have three originals, I have them here, so. I would just send them down, you folks can sign them and we get them posted. After this immediately, I have a complete packet that will go online with all the explanations, as well as all the appendix. Items for the, for the ordinance changes as well as the charter changes. So we'll be all set.
First time that we see the ordinance changes, like I didn't know what was going on with ordinance changes before.
You didn't, you didn't remember all the ordinance changes we made? We made them and we voted them.
So, so there's nothing, there's nothing different from the planning board that they're adding on?
The planning board had a couple things that they didn't get approved last year that they resubmitted. And then we have the street design and construction ordinance changes that, that we looked at to propose, so those are part of the, the package as well.
Yeah, I think we need to vote to approve the warrant.
I think so too.
Wholesale, okay, not just the budgetary items, but most to approve and then we'll sign, yeah.
And then she can order the time report books?
Right, so do you, do you want the rest of it?
No, no, I think.
I think, I think you have enough here.
To approve that.
That's correct, once you approve that, then we can move forward.
Then I make a motion, we approve.
Is there a second? Favor that?
All right, there are three, three here for signatures, I've yellow tabbed them.
There you go, three spaces.
Well, if you need, if you need copies of the appendix. That'll be attached to the warrant. I can get those and provide them to you.
Okay. Why don't we skip over the payable ones and go move on to, we've got an application here from the Urundul. I'm sorry, Kennybank Urundul, Kennybank Poor Little League, want to utilize the field for softball. Practices, weeknight practices and games on Saturday. It's been approved by our rec director, subject to some parking cautions, and by our. Public Works Director. Just for softball, not baseball. Yeah.
Just for softball, you said?
They will not be using the baseball field, just a softball field, the baseball field will not be used this year, it's setting, just the softball.
Okay, then I'll say that's not ready.
Correct. Okay, that's one, right, makes sense.
Okay, anybody want to see this, or? I'm taking a motion to approve its use now. All in favor? Okay, now we're going to discuss free range chickens?
Free range chickens, yes. Okay. A subject that has taken up a lot of my time over the last couple of weeks, believe it or not.
Okay.
Yeah, we've had a lot of complaints of neighbors complaining about their neighbors' chickens coming into their yard and. Scratching up their grass and their yards, defecating in their driveways, and it's just becoming a nuisance, so. Presently, we have no ordinance prohibiting free range chickens. The statute on animal control is really silent on chickens at this point. So I'm just asking you folks, I've, I talked to Lee J today about. The possibility of assisting me in looking at a draft ordinance that we bring forward to you folks to review. Prior to having a little bit of control on the, the territorial rights of free range chickens. And so I think what we, I think what we'd love to envision here would be to. At least have an ordinance that, that tells folks if they're going to have them, that they control them within their own yards as opposed to their neighbor's yard, so.
I don't think you should limit it to just chicken, it should be fowl, because you've got guinea hens that are the same thing. I know I let my guinea hens out and every once in a while I gotta go running down and try to reel them back in, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So it should be, it should be all these types of. Okay.
Yeah, somebody might have.
Unless I hear strong injections, I, I would like to just, you know, Lee J and I will work on it a little bit, and I, I talked to. I talked to Debbie too as well, who are patrol officer about being involved, she's going to look at some of. Other ordinances that are around our neighbors and see if we can put something together that, I don't want to be so intrusive. Because I really think that we're still in lots of our areas still very rural, so I'd like to. To, to allow that to happen, and then Lee J said something about, there's a new farm to. There's a new statute that just got initiated to allow local farming. I can't remember the name of it, he mentioned it right off, he said we've got to be very, yeah, the right to food, that's the one.
That's a constitutional amendment, which will be utilized probably to say that anything to.
Right, so we're gonna have to be cautious around that as well, so. We'll probably work on it a little bit, but we'll get it in front of you so you can take a look at it.
Yeah, you go good, another one. But, but, but still, to me, it should be. Just part of the good neighbor policy, if my neighbor's got chickens and they're coming over and messing up my driveway. I may want to have a roast chicken for Sunday dinner, but. You know, if, if, if you ask your neighbor to please keep your chickens home. Then they should have a way to do that, I mean, whether they put a fence up. I know that's not free range chickens, but a fence between the properties at least might keep the chickens at your house and not mine.
People think that just because they get chickens, they can let them go, you're not gonna tell them what to do with their chickens, so unfortunately.
So I get the high sign to move forward with some sort of ordinance?
Yeah.
Draft?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, next item was something to do with the chief and.
Yeah, he, he came in to speak to me again today about. The cost associated with ambulances, and I, and I just wanted to share that with you, right, we're getting into the. Three twenty to three fifty range, and. As you know, we're looking at making a proposal next year about. Setting some money aside or to move forward with replacing our ambulance, so. The prices, I mean, when we first put the. Put the capital budget together a few years back, we were at two eighty, and I had proposed three ten. And now we're closer to, to three forty to three fifty in some respects, so. And what the, what the salesman, he's, he's talked to three companies now that have provided three estimates. For him. And what they're saying is that they won't even guarantee it, once. Once they have a down payment, sort of like what Rog is talking about with the frame on the truck, once they have a down payment. Then the escalator, there may still be an escalator provided within the purchase of that truck whenever it gets purchased, so. Things are changing rapidly. In terms of any of the heavy equipment that we're purchasing, so I just wanted to sort of give you a heads up on that, and. We may have further discussions as we, as we get further down the road here, but something that we're really looking at now.
Okay, Dan, you want to discuss our meeting room there?
Yeah, a couple of things, so you know, we've had this issue with the microphones. And I reached out again to the company and we kind of got a. Didn't make sense, you know, I just kind of got the roundabout comment, right, so, you know, for Keith's direction today, maybe it's time to move on, so I've, I've reached out to Headlight. It's a company that I've used at Pratt before, they're out of Portland, I've reached out to them today, Keith sent them some sketches of. You know, what the AVs print is for, for the building, so. We're gonna try to move forward and see what we can do and get something better here, or, you know, we're just, we're really not getting anywhere, this is excuse after excuse, and I mean. I get it, but this has been, I don't know, what, six, seven months anyway?
Yeah, it's been all that time.
Yeah, so it's time to do something, so, so we'll move forward with that. The other item is, so the planning board started meeting back here again, and. I listened to their meeting, and the same issue happened as what's happened with us. They had a, an old, somebody else that was. Part of the presentation through Zoom, and they lost the audio, they couldn't do the audio, and I guess. Why don't we just spend the six hundred bucks and buy a desktop and put a desktop right there, dedicate it. Have everything all plugged in right there, so we don't have to plug, unplug, just, I mean, they're not that expensive, we just. Buy a system and set it up right here on the desk, specific just for all of this. You know, instead of, you know, unplugging his laptop, if you're gone and maybe whatever, I, I don't, I think we just need to set something up right there, leave it there.
That's the source of the problem?
Well, I know that the last time it was, you know, we kept playing, had to play with the plug, and then we finally got audio. What was happening is they weren't getting audio through Zoom from the, from somebody on the outside. And it was coming through there, and the planning board was like, well, it's the TV, well, it's not the TV, the TVs have nothing to do with it, it's this system.
Right.
And I just, to me, why do we have to keep plugging things in, you know, move this laptop, plug it in, move it. Set something up, leave it there, we don't have to touch it again, it's dedicated to this room, and dedicated to the audio visual system that's in this room. That's just, that's my put, it's not expensive, you can buy a lot, you know, a desktop, you don't need a very super powerful desktop, you can buy a desktop for four, five hundred bucks. Want a monitor, you know, obviously we need a monitor, so, but they're, they're cheap, a lot cheaper than a laptop, and it'll, I think it'll do the job just as well, so.
And it would be right there, just there.
Yeah, it'd be there and it'd be specific, I mean, obviously you could set it up so that you have a login account, so that only certain people can log in, but. You know, you don't have to play around with plugs all the time, you know, plug it in, plug it out, plug it in, plug it out, that just. It's, it's, it's an opportunity for something to go wrong, so.
I agree with you.
You know, I mean. Obviously.
You want to check into that and see?
Gotta pay for it, well, I mean, you, you used.
We got Ralph, Red Dog.
Yeah.
Get ahold of Ralph and he can give me an estimate of what it would be, come in and look at what we have now and see. See what he can offer, you're looking at a desktop computer, that's all.
Yeah.
And then it could be used for any presentations, that could be screened on here if we needed to, that kind of thing.
Yeah, the other thing too, you know, I just, I know we talked a little bit about this, but. I'd like to see if we can get some different mounts for these TVs to turn them a little bit, so that their face. You know, a little bit easier for people to see rather than on a wall, or. Not sure if that's that big a deal, maybe just one of them or whatever, but.
Yeah, they, they do come out, but you're right, they don't angle much.
Right.
So people could see from which direction, because you've got.
Right, but so for, you know, like for, if there's a presentation going on for us to see, or for the planning board to see, or whatever, it's at an angle, right? And so there was a discussion on the planning board of, well, geez, you know, I, you know, I have to zoom in and I can't, well. The comment was, well, we'll zoom in on the computer, well, it's still hard to see way over there at that angle, so they kind of turned it a little bit.
Yeah, that one could be this way.
One or two of them, you know, I mean, those mounts aren't that expensive, you know, we put a swivel mount on there or something, but. It's not that big a deal, it's just a suggestion that I thought we could look at.
Good idea, another good idea. Anything to make this room more user friendly?
And there was comment at the planning board about, you know, the HVAC kicking in, they can't hear. I know Keith had talked, mentioned something about some rugs.
Yeah, I looked at some area rugs. The town clerk had a good suggestion about purchasing a few. Went up to Martin's, looked at some, they're eight by 10 rugs is what you could get. I talked to the salesman up there. If we went with a commercial grade rug, it's not bordered. It would fray on the ends unless we actually installed it. And I think our intent here is to try something that is not overly expensive. And then if it works, then I can come back and as like in the lobby, there, those, those items that are put down there, I think they're two by two squares. And they can lay the squares down in the room. And then if, if we have a stain in one, we can always just remove the square as opposed to the entire rug. So but I think we'll get this, the throw, they're like, I don't know, what do they call them? I, I don't know enough about rugs, but.
Like area rugs.
Yeah, that's it. Area rugs. We get three or four of them. We'll put, we'll put two on either side. So we get four of them. And we'll try and see if that takes care of some of the sound coming off the ceiling.
And it doesn't help if you're sitting, I know when we have the historical society meeting, we're usually sitting right there in the middle. And the first thing that happens is the fan comes on. And then the air conditioning comes on. Fortunately, there's just a few of us around the table, so we can hear each other. But that ambient sound is very, very distracting.
Well, with this microphone this close to me, you can hear me well. Can you or can't you? You can hear me fine? Yeah. As long as the microphones are up close to our voices, I think that it's okay. But oftentimes we forget to do that, so.
Yeah, hopefully the new mics are made more for, you know, rather than having to be right on it. So hopefully, if we ever get the new mic, we'll see how that goes and hopefully it'll be better.
It's a work in progress.
And Chief, can you? I didn't mention it earlier, so maybe for the next meeting, can you put an agenda item and ask John, I'd like to talk a little bit about the town website. I've gotten some comments and, and I actually thought one of the individuals is gonna be here tonight, but I'd like to talk a little bit about the town website.
Okay.
You know.
Positive, negative comments?
Um, so kind of a mix.
Okay.
But, you know, the, the negative part wasn't really negative. The negative, those comments were more of an opportunity to enhance it.
Okay.
Um, you know, I mean, there are, when you're looking from a mobile standpoint, there are some things that don't work right. And John was working to get those. I sent him, you know, a list of stuff. But I, it's an opportunity maybe to enhance the website. It may cost us money. I don't know, but, you know.
Yeah, he would have been here this evening, but he went to the, the county budget meeting on Saturday. And indicated to me that there was an outbreak of one of the people that attended that had COVID. So he stayed home as opposed to coming here. I mean, he did give me news that the projection that we had in the county budget, when we discussed it during the budget process, is the same. It did not deviate, so. I think it went up like $4,800.
I think what I'll do is I'll email John and say, hey, here's some thoughts. Can you check with Gov, whatever.
Gov Office.
Gov Office and see what additional cost it'd be. And then we can talk about it at the next meeting.
Okay.
That's it, Tom. Sorry.
Have you spent enough money, Dan?
Hopefully these things will bring money in.
Okay, then I'm gonna go back to approval of the, just the payable.
Yes. So move.
All in favor? In the business. Yes.
Our friend from Windy Brook was supposed to come down and refertilize the forest with his tractor. But he looked at it, it's too soft.
Okay.
It's gonna be done with a walk behind, spread it right now. And it's time. It needs to be done very soon.
Okay.
It's fertilizer time. A good test will be preferable. And he recommended right now that we would put in 19, 19, 19 fertilizer.
19, 19, 19?
Yeah, that's what, that's what we use on our lawns. And he recommended that for that field.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
I don't know if it would be, I haven't looked at it.
Okay.
Sam said if he were on his tractor, that he would, he would leave tractor tracks everywhere he went. So he recommended doing it in my hand. I don't know if a small one with a toe behind would do it.
Take a look at it. Let me know. Thanks, guys.
Anything else?
Second.
All in favor?